Turn on the video and the audio.
All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. It is two o'clock. My name is Tom Mensur, Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Gary Edwards, and Commissioner Claus should be joining us in a few moments. Calling this meeting to order, and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Edwards.
Please join me in the pledge to this great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd also like to do a land acknowledgement.
One second. We would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawson, Misswali, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing and reshare of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Thank you, Commissioner Mejia. Next up is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. We've had, as I understand, three tweaks. I'll ask the Assistant County Manager to go over those for the board.
Yes, Commissioner. Thank you. Item 9A was moved from the consent agenda to department items. You'll find that for the sheriff. That's a memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Secret Service. Also, on items 3B and 6B, we added the dollar amounts specifically for those items. And that's it?
Any questions for the Assistant County Manager on the agenda, changes?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since item 9A regarding the sheriff's department, MLU, was moved from consent to department, could we move that up to the front of the department items so that Chief Carter can get out of here since she was gonna be on consent? Is that okay? Can we do that?
You can make the motion to amend the agenda.
Okay. So that would make it 3A. Sorry.
Perhaps just a motion.
Just say to move item 9A to the front of the department.
Yeah, then I would make that motion to move item 9A to the front of department items.
Second. Motion made in second to move 9A up to the front of Section 4 of the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, you opposed. Okay. Very good. Then let's get to the next item, which is a presentation.
Do we have to move to approve the agenda as amended, Chair?
Sorry, thank you. All right, so we have a motion to, the motion was made to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to approve that amended agenda?
Someone.
For a second.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor, say aye. Aye, you opposed. Okay, very good. Okay, next up is presentations. Proclamation for African-American History Month. And we have that. And as I understand, we have as a special guest Mayor of Olympia, Dante Payne, first African-American mayor of Olympia. Very pleased to have you with us. If you wanted to give you the floor, if you had any comments to make before we launch in, appreciate you being here.
Sure. So, good afternoon, Chair Mensur and members of the commission. Again, Dante Payne, for the record, Mayor of Olympia. It's a tremendous honor to be here today to accept this proclamation on behalf of our region, our county. You know, I think that sometimes we get lost or we don't think about why it's important to recognize things like Black History Month via proclamation. And sometimes proclamations are sort of routine, and we do what we need to do, we read it, we sign it, we move on. But the words in a proclamation are, we cannot take for granted, especially when we look at the state of our nation right now. We can't take for granted that we live in a time where we have made such tremendous progress. And so I think about, you know, when you are climbing a really tall hill or a mountain, when you finally reach the top, what is the first thing you do? Your instinct is to stop, turn around, look back, see how far you've come, and look outward. And that's exactly how I see history. It's very important that we take a look at where we've come from, how far we've come, and we look out. We look to the future. You know, when the city of Olympia was founded in 1859, I very well would have been a slave somewhere in the United States at that time. And so when I think about being able to stand here today and accept this proclamation, I think about just that fact, that it's a time to pause and reflect, to just see how far we have come as a country. And that's worth us taking a moment to pause, to reflect on that, and also to take time to think about the future and where we want to go. And so that's why it's so important that we do look back so that we can see how far we've come and also remember that we need to rededicate ourselves to the pursuit of equity and justice for all people. And that's what Black History Month is about, and it's an honor to be here this afternoon to accept it on behalf of our county. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Comments from board members before we go to the proclamation?
Can't top that.
I would just mention that the, I think this event was mentioned at a previous county commissioner meeting, but the new Life Baptist Church in Lacey, which is the largest African-American church in our county, has done an African-American history pop-up museum basically for several, and there's one more day of it, I believe, this coming Saturday. I took my kids this past Saturday, and I'd gone last year, but they'd added more stuff to it, and it's super cool. And what struck me was how many folks I heard in the museum commenting out loud to a friend or, you know, somebody they were with, a companion, how they hadn't seen, they learned something, they hadn't seen all those threads drawn together in any one place, and how, you know, how they learned something. I mean, I was hearing those comments left and right as I walked through. It's a circle. You go through the circle. So my kids really enjoyed being there, and I'd encourage anybody to go check it out next Saturday. I think it's kind of the most directly related event that we have going on in the county, directly related to this proclamation, what it's about. Commissioner Edwards?
I guess I'd just point out that Thurston County does have a long history of African-American involvement with Mr. Bush and the start of Thurston County.
No further comments. I'd ask the Vice Chair, or is it Commissioner Mejia? Will you be reading the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so African-American History Month proclamation. Whereas in 1619, 20-plus kidnapped Africans were brought to these shores. For more than 250 groups, millions of human beings of African descent were enslaved and were regarded as three-fifths of a person by the U.S. Constitution. Whereas, as a result of the determination, hard work, and perseverance against all odds, Black Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions in all aspects of society. Whereas during African-American History Month, started in 1976, the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our cultural, spiritual, political, and economic development are celebrated. And whereas in 2024, the theme for Black History Month 2024 focuses on African-Americans and the arts, shining a light on visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary, and other forms of cultural expression, in which the African-American influence has been paramount. And whereas African-American artists have used art to preserve history and community memory as well as for empowerment. Whereas in 2023, city of Olympia residents voted in the first Black City Mayor, also a U.S. Army veteran and father. And whereas Black history is past, present, and future, while commemorating the outstanding legacy and strength of Black people is important, commitment to empowering a successful future is just as critical. Black history is not just something of the past, it is a living and alive, and it's being made every single day. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims February 2024 as Black History Month in Thurston County, and calls on all residents to actively engage in events, discussions, and reflections that honor the immense contributions of African-Americans to our community and our nation adopted this 20th day of February 2024, the Board of County Commissioners.
Do this in your job? They won't be able to tell time. Okay, very good. Next up is opportunity for the public to address the board. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. However, there are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. When called, please introduce yourself, indicating the area of the county in which you reside. Please address the board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. You are limited to a total of four minutes and may not donate any of that speaking time to another speaker. No comments that allude offensive, inflammatory, hateful, discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business. No remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could come be further the board on appeal. All written materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256, RCW. Thank you for your cooperation. First up, I have John Pettit with OnDeck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live out up Rich Road, of which you are all well aware of that. Today, I had previously sent in a letter regarding one of the issues which I do have a concern for, but it's kind of a two-way concern, so maybe there's a benefit to this. And that is, is that you have an item listed in 4C, Resolution to Reimburse Thurston County Limited Tax General Obligation Bonds. First of all, I think you're all aware, if you'd read the particular document, while this is a suggestion that you can retroactively pay back for an expense that has been incurred, you should make a note of this. You're good at writing notes. Has those items and expenditures already been provided under budget appropriations? If they haven't been appropriated as of yet, it's illegal to make expenditures, and you can't make a retroactive appropriation. Next, is the project that's supposedly being defined, is that project already approved within the capital facility plan? No, it's not. So you're wanting to approve something for payment of a program going back into January for something that was never, a project that has not been approved yet, for a bond that you will be approving should you move forward with this? Because what you're doing right here today, while it might look like you're retroactively approving for payment of expenses, what you are is you are obligating that you will be voting for the bond for $42 million. And even your finance and budget person made a statement this morning, it has not even determined where that money would come from to pay for the bond. That's all part of going through a capital facility program through a planning commission. So you're not ready for any of that. But the other side I was mentioning is, is there may be a positive sense to this. Three of you commissioners this next year, your seats are going to be available for new election, people that want to get elected. And with what you do today is going to obligate as to whether you are already voting for another $42 million in bonds that you don't even know where it'd be paid for, for projects that aren't even approved. It seems really peculiar that you'd even start going this direction when you have failed yet to even get the audit report that's soon to be coming to you, which may have some very impactful elements about what's going to happen to Thurston County and the finances. So I'd recommend you decide not to vote on this, or you vote no on it. Because to vote for something merely because a particular finance manager or somebody says, oh, we encourage you to do this, that's not what you're here for, you to represent the people. If you're appropriating, gonna make appropriations or expenditures without appropriations, you will become personally liable for those. Don't do it. And I assure you that whatever your vote is today, it'll be brought out large to the public when it comes to deciding if you're running for office again. If you're not, doesn't matter, it's up to you. They need to know whether or not you are just gonna be spending their money without any type of thought of what's really gonna happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Terry Ballard's up next.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Terry Ballard, and I live in Tanglewild, unincorporated Thurston County. Also, I'm a precinct committee officer for the Democrats for Lydia Hawk. Today, I want to make you aware. Awareness is something that we need to start being our views and our concerns. This voucher listing that you're approving today, did you spend the money yet? Okay? Because you can't bring the cart before the horse. You can't spend money before it's approved. So I'm just concerned about this voucher, these voucher lists that you keep on approving and consolidating. But I'm not here to talk about that today. I'm here to talk about this building. I'm here to talk about a county seat. In April, in July of '22, April of '22, and July of '23, Mr. Pettit here gave you letters about how illegal it is to have this building outside the county seat. It's time to build a case with the AG over this and to include your public meetings. In Thurston County versus city of Olympia in 2004, Elizabeth Pettridge was part of that. And they wanted to move the county, they wanted to move the Superior Court outside the county seat. They define at, quite frankly, there. RCW 362380, Office of the Clerk has to be at the county seat. This is not the county seat. And Superior Court has to have their sessions at the county seat. This is not the county seat. This is not what was established. It takes two-thirds of the vote of the people per the, per the state constitution to get the boundaries of the county seat. Okay? That's in the article. Okay? Article 11, I believe it is. This is your county seat. See the blue? Okay? It's on the, it's on the Olympia map. Okay? And this is the atrium outside the county seat, which was established in Order 3307 on 5/5, July of 5/5, 1964. You have a bunch of regulations that you're, that you're against, and the AGO that they use for this TC versus city of Olympia was written by Christina Gregwire. Okay? Again, RCW 361690, suitable, you have to give suitable office space to the elected officials. Okay? That doesn't mean that they operate an illegal office outside the county seat. Okay? They chose to do that. They chose to be here. 9A 72.080, okay? A statement of what you don't know to be true is a false statement. And false statements under 4220.040 is, is a gross misdemeanor. Okay? Which is up to 5K and 364 days in jail is a gross misdemeanor. Well, you know what? A judge might concern himself with that. But RCW 363280, hold the meeting at the county seat. The ultimate option is one per calendar month and one per calendar quarter outside of the county seat. 4230.070, other than a regular meeting or, or no action may be taken. You're acting on things that are known void. RCW 42.30.075, before January of each year, you're supposed to have a register to the state about these meetings. Do you have that? Okay? RCW 4220 is the, is the Public Meetings Act. And for violating the Public Meetings Act in 4230.120 is a $500 fine for the first and a $1,000 individual fine for the next. Okay? And the judge cannot minimize that. Thank you.
Anyone else who didn't sign up that'd like to give public comment, Mr. Trobridge?
So I just have to laugh today at the, now I'm totally bewildered as to what's going on with the lake project. I went to speak with Mr. Stuart Whitford this morning. He's the only other county employee assigned to the four lake projects besides Mr. Gilbert. And I thought we had a cordial meeting, you know? We talked about what we discussed last time I was here, that McAllister Springs requires us not to leave any dead plant material in the lake, but instead remove it through harvesting or bottom screening or something. He seemed to agree with me on that. We went over all sorts of stuff. He told me he was going to put out an announcement to different firms for IAVAMPs, and that it would include that about McAllister Springs. So I thought, good. I came out okay. Went home, had lunch, looked online, found out that there's a company in Rochester that does harvesting and bottom screening. And so I called them up, and I said, hey, what about it? And he said, well, we already got a call for bids, he says, and we haven't heard back. So we made a bid for herbicides only. Herbicides only? No one ever told me anything about that. Who made that decision? So now I feel like some backroom, something has happened, and maybe someone can explain it. Mr. Gilbert tells me that it's okay, and I'm just left kind of laughing. I can only come here now every two weeks. You guys are so sick of hearing me, you've made it every two weeks. Two weeks from now is March 5th. By then, he's going to have sent out this thing. This is imminent now. He's going to send out a thing, and I sure like to get a copy. I didn't even hear about this other one that he sent out. And I'd sure like to be included in it, that we're not going to leave any dead plants in the lake. And what about drawing a line that excludes my wetlands? I've given you 50 reasons why that should happen. What reason do you have now for not doing that? I can lecture you about the due process clause, but that would take more than 1 minute 37 seconds. But, you know, life, liberty, or property, which is lily pads, without due process of law, you can't just leave us out and then charge us. So it should say that in there. They're gonna have to draw some boundaries. This company said that they can do individual lots. They'll do your yard and not somebody else's. They don't even need an LMD. All you have to do is just sign up with a qualified herbicide applicator, and he does harvesting too. Isn't that what we need now? If we're gonna have a compromise, the people who want it can get it, the people who don't want it don't have to have it. Regardless of the money, forget that. Let's change it. Let's not have it be herbicides only. Let's scrap that. Whose idea was that? I've got 45 seconds left.
Okay. Anyone else in the boardroom? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to provide testimony?
The only non-staff person is Betty Hauser.
Ms. Hauser, would you like to provide testimony to the board, or public comment, I should say?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. That will conclude public comment, and we will move on to county manager update.
Thank you, commissioners. A couple of items. One relative to vouchers, as folks will know when they look at the agenda, those vouchers are specifically dated for transactions which have already occurred in the past. Those expenditures happen because they have budget authority appropriated to them to occur. This is a process of the board making, doing an approval of those vouchers as part of the process of checks and balances. So it's, I just wanted to clear that up a little bit. Relative to the lake management districts, and I know that there's a lot of moving parts, and it can be quite confusing at times, what had been out previously towards the end of last year, if the board will recall, is a request for proposal for aquatic vegetation management. The idea with that was to be able to provide a certain amount of economies of scale, was to seek one RFP or responses specifically that could handle all four lakes. That does not predetermine what treatments ultimately will happen in any one of those lakes. But what it does is hopefully achieve some, some economy of scale. That contract has not been awarded yet. Individuals had time, an RFP goes out, and then there's a set time by which they have to respond. Those responses are in, but a selection of a contractor has not yet occurred. So that is yet to happen and will come back to the board at the time that that contract is awarded. Concurrently, there's an RFP out there for a consultant to assist two of the lake management districts, often in Patterson, in doing their very first I-VAMP, which is the Integrated Aquatic Vegetation Management Plan for each one of those. That I-VAMP, which is a lot easier to say than the other, will basically help the lake management districts then create any particular program or work program to address the invasives within that system. All of that is yet to be determined. So it's a cascading event, and once they have an I-VAMP, once they have a work plan, then this contractor may be on, under contract that they could utilize to do some treatment. But that is a long ways off yet, and I apologize, I speak with my hands a lot, so not to be distracting. But that, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context there as well, if that is helpful. Next, while it's not specific to the Board of County Commissioners, I did want to announce that Ray Peters with the Squawson Island Tribe has been appointed as a tribal representative on our local Board of Health. If Commissioners will recall that a couple of years ago, the legislature changed the composition of the Boards of Health. We have amended ours twice in the past couple of years, and it's been great to finally be able to fill that seat. And that is a three-year term with a potential for reappointment. Our hope is that to be able to create some type of rotation with our other two tribes as well. And then finally, just as a reminder, on April first, our new county manager will be starting, Leonard Hernandez, will start on that date.
Commissioner, I wear the side hand.
Is there any chance that that RFP, could it include, I know this is kind of late in the game, but could it include a section of, could you do this same, as a mechanical process? I mean, is that a possibility that we could opt for instead of the chemicals?
I apologize, Commissioner, I do not have that RFP in front of me at the moment, but we can clarify that. I don't believe it was prescriptive to the extent of how it would be approached, but just to know that there was an opportunity to do vegetation management in the lakes. And then the responding contractor can determine what they can offer. But I'll double-check and make sure.
Just as a follow-up with that, I, I would, I would just like, I, I just want to point out to those that are watching that although our system is far from perfect, it's a darn sight better than Russia's got. I'm just going to let it go at that for right now, because I don't know the answers. That's it, sir.
Commissioner.
I, I want to take this moment and thank Commissioner Mansour, because it was you actually who brought this, the study that Mr. Trobridge provided. You went through it and provided that to Stuart, so it would be included into that RFP and that work be done. So I'm not sure if you want to discuss that, because that was work that you, you did, sir.
I appreciate it. I mean, I mailed a copy of that to Mr. Trobridge, so he's aware. I know you're the most interested party on this topic, so, and as I understood your explanation, Assistant County Manager Gelder, the, there's multiple RFPs going on, there's an RFP for if a lake needs treatment, this is a contractor that might do it, a chemical treatment, but there's a separate RFP for, for the I-VAMP development. And the I-VAMP for Patterson may, if it resulted in, let's say it resulted in an alternative strategy to chemical application, then potentially another RFP would go out for mechanical harvesting or some other type of activity that would be needed. Is that?
Very potentially, yes.
I mean, not to say that that's going to happen, but that's how the process would work. Okay. Yeah. Well, appreciate that. On the issue of the county manager, I just wanted to make a comment on behalf of the board. Since there has been some media reporting on our county manager hiring decision, the board wanted to reconfirm for the public that we conducted an extensive search, interview, background and reference check process with both internal and external partners. And the board was satisfied with the results of that process. Mr. Hernandez promises to bring a wealth of experience and fresh ideas that will be of great benefit to this county. We look forward to welcoming and introducing him to the community. And to that end, we will be scheduling a public open house in early April to allow community members to interact with and get to know Mr. Hernandez directly. We'll announce the date, place, and time for that event as soon as it's set, which will be in a matter of a couple of days, we believe. Anything else on county manager update? Okay. Then let's go on to the consent agenda. We have items three A through three M. Is there any request to pull an item from that list? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Second. Motion in second, non-divisible motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Consent items three A through three M are approved. Item four A under Commissioner's office is equal employment opportunity.
Sheriff's Office.
We're going to do nine, nine A first.
Yeah, thank you. We're going to jump to nine A. And that is a sheriff's department item, memorandum of understanding with U.S. Secret Service. We have Deputy Chief Carter with us, and also Detective Kempke, I believe, is related to this item. So Chief Carter, can you give us kind of an overview of this item?
Yeah, so as one of my roles in the sheriff's office, I have oversight over detective division. And the majority of cases that come to detectives has some type of technology component to it. And in an effort to bolster our capacity around technology, we would like to enter a MOU with the Secret Service, which will open up opportunities for training for our detective. It will also create networking and then act as a force multiplier if there were to be a critical incident in Thurston County.
Questions from the board? I had one, I mean, the, it doesn't say in this description, but looking at my notes from the last meeting, this is related to cyber fraud incidents, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just making, clarifying that.
So it places one of our detectives on the cyber fraud task force.
Okay, perfect. I think that was what I didn't catch this morning, but we did talk about last week.
I would like to say, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that the sheriff needs the board's blessing to do this. But we don't have legal here, haven't heard anything about that. But I, I think it is something that we need all the help we can get when we hear about hacking that goes on around this country and hospitals being tied up for, you know, any length of time, schools, government entities, and so we need all the help we can get. And if we can get the assistance of the United States government to help us in this endeavor, I think it's time well spent, because we're not spending any more money on this particular project. This is one of those things that we do not have a dollar attached to.
I'll make a note for whoever might want to make a motion. I think there's a typo in the second line where it says secretary. Versus Secret Service, is that right, Chief Carter? Should say, uh, Secret Service, not Secretary Service. All right. Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Secret Service for reimbursement of costs related to work performed to assist the Secret Service in conducting investigations and authorize the sheriff to execute the memorandum.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve this memorandum of understanding. Is there discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Detective Kempke.
Thank you.
Flipping back to item four A, equal opportunity, I keep saying that, equal, yeah, equal employment opportunity plan. D.V. Ogden, racial equity program manager, is available here to give us an overview of this item. Good afternoon, D.V.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me. I am going to stay off camera as I'm under the weather right now, but just some background on the plan, my understanding is that when the county went to a countywide UEI to receive grants, at that time, our auditor's office recognized that we needed a countywide equal employment opportunity plan to remain in compliance with Department of Justice mandate in order to receive grants. So what you have in front of you is a plan that essentially lays the groundwork for how we collect and report on data that is required by DOJ. And within the plan, you'll see some analysis on some data that we collect currently from HR, but some strategies on how we establish a consistent and accurate process to collect data on all employee activity, to include promotions, demotions, transfers, anything of that sort. And so over the next year or so, this plan will help the county kind of get into a better shape in data collection on employee activity and be able to report out and also strategize moving forward on how we address underutilization with certain demographics.
Questions for D.V.? No questions, is there a motion?
I would move to approve and adopt the Thurston County Equal Employment Opportunity Plan through 2025 for compliance with DOJ requirements to receive grant awards.
Second.
Motion in second to approve and adopt the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, D.V. Four B, interlocal agreement for 2024 Climate Mitigation Collaborative Regional Initiatives. Rebecca Harvey, Climate Mitigation Senior Program Manager. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a new interlocal agreement among Thurston County and the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tomwater to implement two regionally coordinated initiatives to advance implementation of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan by helping to reduce our largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the county, which is residential energy use. These initiatives are, first, designing a residential energy efficiency and electrification campaign, which will provide outreach, incentives, and technical assistance to support our residents in making electrification and efficiency improvements to their homes. And second, developing a home energy score model ordinance, which is a policy to increase consumer awareness by requiring labeling of the home's energy rating at the time a property is listed for sale. The total proposed budget included in this interlocal agreement is for 2024, and it will cover contractor services for both initiatives together and will not exceed fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars per party. The City of Olympia will serve as the contract manager and will invoice Thurston County for our share of the total costs, which are split equally four ways across the four jurisdictions. And I will add that there are grant funds forthcoming at both the federal and state levels that will help support implementation of the campaign once it's developed. That will happen later in 2025 with the grant funds. And so this interlocal agreement and budget are just for the design and planning of the campaign and the development of a model ordinance, which can later be considered for potential adoption by each of the jurisdictions. And I will also state the budget is allocated in the Climate Mitigation Fund in the county's budget. Thanks.
Questions for Rebecca?
Yes.
Commissioner.
As this study moves forward, will it at least analyze the need or, or focus on the need of additional power that this community would need if some of the community converted to additional electric power? And so what I'm specifically referring to, as there's more draw on our current infrastructure, which we don't seem to have enough of now, is there a process in place to make sure that we know and the community knows we need to increase that electrical power production so that the plan will work? Because without additional power, it won't work.
I hear you, Commissioner. Thank you for the question. As far as the two initiatives, the ordinance is dealing with a home energy score that deals with the efficiency of the home, so doesn't really directly refer to where the fuel comes from. It's more about the overall performance in terms of efficiency. So I think you're speaking more to the campaign piece, which is encouraging residents to switch over to electric if they're able, and making that more financially feasible for them on the individual level. So I would say, you know, as a local government implementing this outreach and education and incentive program, we are not controlling the electric grid and dealing with the sources of power, per se. But as we've discussed before, we are in very close communication with Puget Sound Energy, and we're bringing them here to present to the commission in a couple of weeks, I believe, second week of March. And they're really the best suited to answer these questions for you, and I'll be all ears and sharing that information through the venues that we are creating to interface with our community and communicate these, all the benefits and potential, you know, challenges to electrification. As you raised, there are challenges to it as well.
And that presentation was based on Commissioner Edwards making the same comments at the board session?
Yes, that was in response to.
I was just going to say that I was at the TPB meeting last week, and PSC gave a presentation on that. And I was going to say, if we have not invited them yet to come give this presentation, I mean, it's.
I think we have. Yeah, I think it's in the works.
And it's the same, I imagine it's something the same on the energy here, because, yes, I mean, it's valid questions that Commissioner Edwards raises, and they, some of their presentation answered it, some of it left still a lot of questions, but I, I think it'd be a good one for them to come and give to us, but it sounds like it's in the works.
Yes, I spoke to Christine Rompa, who is the local government liaison, our liaison to PSC at the Switches On kickoff event. Commissioner Mejia was there on Thursday evening, and I asked her that question, and she said, yes, that I think we've already reached out to her and scheduled the date. Do we have a date? Is it March eleventh, I want to say? I'm not sure. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot, Amy, but I think it's early March, March thirteenth.
Yeah, they still had a hard time identifying new generation sources, but they were like, well, we're just the distribution grid. So I look forward to the grilling that Commissioner Edwards will give them.
I'll be there.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for, about the potential or the item we're considering this afternoon? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the interlocal agreement between Thurston County, City of Lacey, City of Olympia, and City of Tomwater to support implementation of the 2024 Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Regional Initiatives for an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, and authorize the interim county manager to execute the agreement and amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the interlocal agreement regarding the regional initiatives of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Four C is resolution of intent to reimburse Thurston County limited tax general obligation And we have Nicole Martinez, our budget and fiscal manager to. And we have Nicole Martinez, our Budget and Fiscal Manager, to give us the summary.
Yes, so.
Yeah, good point. Nicole, if the microphone's not working as it was this morning as well, we might.
There's a different configuration for the afternoon meeting than there is for a morning meeting, so that she should be picked up okay.
Okay.
I'll say my name first. So Nicole Martinez, Budget and Fiscal Manager. Can you hear me well? Okay, so this item makes known the county's intent to reimburse itself for capital expenditures not more than 60 days before the adoption of the resolution before you today from proceeds of a future bond issuance. The capital expenditures are for the following projects: so remodeling and renovation of the county's ballot processing center, the purchasing and remodeling of an existing building, or the purchase of land and construction of a new building to house the county sheriff's department, improving the juvenile jail, and acquisition and reconstruction of other associated infrastructure improvements or capital improvements. Now, these identified expenditures and capital projects are included in the capital improvement program. So this resolution does not obligate the county to issue bonds, rather specifies in the event that a bond was issued that the county can reimburse itself from the proceeds. Thank you.
Questions for Nicole?
Yes. Do we, we look like we're going to be in, taking a vote on a resolution. I know it says a resolution of intent, but nonetheless, it is a resolution and my question is, do we have a resolution to look at? I don't see it in my package of material.
Commissioner, it should be attached.
Is it in somebody else's and I just didn't get it?
It was, the resolution was in the AIS packet. But we didn't get a hard copy of it, but it was in the online version.
Let me go on then, because some of you might have gotten it, it sounds like to me.
I just viewed it online.
Okay. And is is there a need for legal to have reviewed this? Because apparently the prosecutor has hired outside counsel that is our legal advisor in this, but I haven't seen it, so I don't know if that's been signed off on yet by legal counsel.
We have outside bond counsel. It's.
Yeah, the prosecutor has to deputize those folks for them to be a legal counsel. That's the only thing I know about it. Have they signed off on this?
Yes, so Commissioner, we have special bond counsel. They actually prepared the resolution for us. The beginning of February, Stacy from Foster Garvey came and gave a presentation on the bond. She's the one who actually wrote the resolution that is before you.
Right, I realize that, but, but I'm curious if they have the final product and has it been signed off on? And I take it.
The answer is yes.
We didn't change it, so. When they gave it to us for consideration, they were signing up on it.
Yes, she signed the resolution as well.
And do we? Is it?
We invented a new process.
No, 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 I know that. So we do have it signed off. And I might point out that before the Board of County Commissioners, we're only allowed to accept legal representation from our own county prosecutor or is designated. So.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the resolution of intent to reimburse Thurston County limited tax general obligation bonds in accordance with federal regulations relating to the use of proceeds of tax-exempt bonds to reimburse the issuer of the bonds for expenditures made before the issued date of the bonds.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the resolution of intent. Any discussion on the motion?
I have one discussion point. We heard public comment earlier regarding this item and there were some concerns mentioned. I just wanted to make sure we address those concerns. So what would be the proper procedure to, to address those? I mean, I know sometimes we get public comment that we, we can't really do anything with, but I heard a couple of concerns on this item today that I thought sounded valid. So is there, would there be any negative implications if we bumped this a week? I know it's time sensitive, but I just didn't know if there was anyone who heard a concern today that they wanted to look into more. I personally would, would like to if there's time, but if there's not time, then I understand that too.
I believe one of the, if I may Commissioners, one of the concerns that was raised was inclusion in the current capital, the CIP. And we did confirm that they are and that there are project placeholders within the CIP specifically for this work to occur, so that addresses that concern. And then in terms of, I think, I believe another one, just this, the action on this one does not predetermine that next step of actually going out for a bond, right? This just enables us to be able to capture costs associated with those projects that are occurring now.
An example of that, just if I could, was the juvenile jail, which I've been very clear that I'm not, I'm not there yet in terms of including that, but I did agree to just put the language in the resolution to give us that opportunity to debate and decide. But I do not see, and I have not been told by counsel that our adoption of this resolution binds us in the way that Mr. Pettit is, has argued. If it did, I wouldn't be voting for it because I have not yet, I've not yet concluded that I want to include the juvenile jail upgrades that have been talked about in this thing. And the other thing was about the funding source being identified. We all know the funding source is going to be the public safety sales tax. How that plays, how that unfolds from a legal standpoint is not, not my area of expertise, but it's not like we're out there even proposing to spend money with no funding source identified for how it would be.
Two of those proposed would be the, potentially the public safety sales tax. The juvenile would not. We would still have to determine prior to going out or in the process of going out for a bond, what that funding.
It could be under the bond without, and have a different repayment source.
There's multiple steps and you can't expect us to be on step Z when we're still a step A. But ultimately, we have to, we, we're presented with a bond proposal that we have to accept. This is not accepting that. This is getting us ready to do the research. That's when we identify all those things that, you know, that have been identified as big worries and those are things we're concerned with too. And that's why we take, take these steps to, to look into them.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that ultimately we'd be taking the next seven plus months, probably not until September, October timeframe to actually come back to the board specifically around a bond issuance.
I won't be supporting a juvenile jail project unless we identify a set funding source, so. Commissioner Edwards?
I guess on the juvenile jail issue, we recently took a tour up there and they're in bad shape.
But we're not here to debate any of that today.
Yes, right, but I, no, my question on that is, is there any chance that this could help us with that particular issue of those safety issues that Commissioner Fornier and myself brought back here a couple of weeks ago?
That, that is correct Commissioner. In the future, when we go to issue a bond, we could issue a bond to cover those costs and at that time specify what the funding source would be.
And maybe, maybe fix it earlier and pay it back with something like that. I mean, there's some maneuvering available. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Klaus, did you have anything further?
Could we give Mr. Pettit the opportunity? It looks like you might want to say one more thing to just respond to the issues that have been raised. Is that okay?
I think you'd have to take a vote outside of public comment.
Either, I mean, I'm, I'm going to go along with Commissioner Klaus. I don't know if any of my other seatmates will, but I always like to have more information than less information. And if that isn't possible, even if it was delayed a week, is that a possibility? So we could actually hear from counsel sometimes on some of these questions. That's all. Otherwise, I'm, I'm.
I, I think it's within my purview to permit it and as Chair, and because it relates to Commissioner Klaus's not being sure if she wants to support it because of, of potentially needing more time, I'm going to give you two minutes, sir, to respond to what you just heard if you could. And that might help Commissioner Klaus.
Can you come to the mic, please?
A couple of questions which were not brought forward was, are there budget appropriations within the budget currently for these projects? And I did not see, and I provided you a copy or a link to the capital facility plan, the resolution that was passed. And I do not see those particular items listed in the capital facility plan. And I think it's appropriate that that should be identified. And then of course, my third thing which I'm going to hit with is, when, if and when, I would appreciate you taking another week or if it's two weeks, two weeks to review it. If it's not appropriation, you probably don't want to spend money ahead of time. But the second would be that you have, instead of a general, I, a vote, a majority type thing, an identified vote of each commissioner as how they vote on this particular issue because you are voting to be spending money of which the money is not even an identified source where it would come from. And therefore, without being appropriated, I want to know who it is that's ready to take accountability for that. I realize this is a thing to allow payment for past payments for expenses, but you can't go backwards with appropriations. It doesn't, you cannot retroactively appropriate money.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That was my comments.
Any other discussion on this item?
I mean, I, these were questions that are more appropriate during when bond counsel was here and that's who I listen to and trust is our bond attorneys. I, I think that's really important to remember that that's where the answers come from and that's where the concerns come up and you know, I'm, I'm comfortable taking the vote and I would also encourage whatever, you know, whatever questions Mr. Pettit has, they can certainly be forwarded to the bond counsel as well. That's where the answers come from. That's, that's it.
I'll just say as a process matter, I have been taking just voice votes, but anytime there's anything controversial or anybody requests a roll call vote, we'll do that and I'm happy to do that in this instance, just for the record. Any other comments or questions before we take a vote?
Commissioners, I mean, we can confirm sort of the appropriation authority.
Yes, so for the, for instance, one of the projects identified is the ballot processing center. On our capital improvement plan, we have a Mottman complex project. So that would incorporate those type of expenses. So we have projects identified on the CIP to cover the expenses identified in this resolution.
And so they already have appropriation authority. Work is being done. This is a standard process that jurisdictions take, is a procedural process that allows us potentially to do a cost recovery of those early expenses and then be able to put those all into one fund, one bond issuance and potentially cover those expenses to be able to be used for other work as well.
I can say we've gone through this a couple of times in the past, the placeholder of like, say, real estate acquisition, which is there because something comes up, you don't know a year in advance that an opportunity might come up to acquire real estate. You have to have that ability to, to act. And we've done that in at least two occasions I can think of in the last few years. And they were questioned and we talked with counsel and we kind of went through the process of just verifying that that was an acceptable process and it was confirmed. So that goes to another one of the issues you heard about today. Okay, so I'm going to call for the vote. Can, if the clerk could take a roll call.
Mr. Menzel?
Mr. Fornier?
Aye.
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 And we will go on to item four E. Resolution for Consolidated Communications of Washington LLC Telecommunications Franchise Agreement Transfer of Control. A mouthful. Hopefully Nicole Martinez, Budget and Fiscal Manager, can make it make sense for us.
Thank you Chair. So again, this item is asking to approve the transfer of control for a telecommunications franchise agreement with Consolidated Communications. So I'm going to spell some, some laws here. So under Washington law and county code, telecommunications broadband companies, they locate their network facilities in public right of ways of a way to require and to obtain local franchises. So this is a franchise agreement that we assign with them. It's a 10-year term. The Consolidated Communications is looking to transfer their control, their entity behind them, which is called Nexcape. We consult with our special counsel, who is Ken, also internal counsel, to go through the application for franchise agreements. They have both agreed that this new entity is able to perform and is qualified for operations within the county. So we're asking just to transfer that control from one entity to another and not to change the agreement that we already established.
Gone over this a couple of times in work sessions. Do Commissioners have questions today? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the resolution of transfer of control for the telecommunications franchise agreement for Consolidated Communications of Washington LLC.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the resolution. Franchise agreement. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to four E. Resolution for temporary appointment to the 19th District State Representative.
Thank you Commissioner. Rob Gelder, Assistant County Manager, prior to jumping into that, just wanted to let the board as well as our viewers know, we're currently having some issues with our camera cutting out. The sound is fine and the recording is still happening, but staff are pursuing what the issue is with the tech. So if you're on Zoom, you're able to see the board. If you are watching our live stream, it's probably less visually appealing, but you definitely are still getting all the content of the dialogue that is occurring, so our apologies for that. So item E is a new one in that it doesn't often happen, but Representative of the 19th Legislative District, Joel McIntyre, has alerted not only this Board of County Commissioners, but the Board of County Commissioners that also are within that legislative district, that he has been called to active service or training for a leave of absence beginning March 5th through and ending on March 8th. Under RCW 7316041, the Board of County Commissioners can therefore grant a leave of absence to him and appoint a temporary replacement. And so the resolution before the board today is doing just that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions I might be able to.
Worth mentioning that District 19 is, just grabs the southwestern corner of Thurston County, basically Independence Valley. So probably not a lot of constituents, but kind of a new entry of that district into our county there from the southwest. Any questions from board on this item? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve a resolution granting a leave of absence to 19th District State Representative Joel McIntyre and appointing Lillian Hale as temporary successor to fill the position of 19th District State Representative due to Representative McIntyre entering active service or training as provided for under RCW 73.16.041.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the resolution for temporary appointment of Lillian Hale to the 19th District. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I would just like to take this opportunity to recognize Mr. McIntyre, Representative McIntyre for his service in the United States Marine Corps and that his, his willingness to kind of give us double service, if you will, legislature and armed services.
I would, yeah, putting him, putting myself in his shoes, he's, I mean, it's got to be really stressful to be, and this is budget week as I understand, and then he's got this other obligation and commitment, so I'd like to make it as easy for him as possible because that's got to be a stressful situation to have to juggle those two super important responsibilities. So hearing no further discussion, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Four E is approved. Four F is a call for sealed bids for the official county newspaper.
Thank you Commissioners. Under RCW 3672075, there is a requirement at the first April meeting, the county legislative authority shall. authority shall let a contract to a legal newspaper qualified under this section to serve as the official county newspaper for the term of one year, beginning the first day of July following. And then there is also RCW sort of creates the framework under which they are an official or legal newspaper of record, and it deals with circulation, deals whether or not you have papers within your county, what portion of coverage. If, say, we were served by a newspaper that didn't, wasn't resident in the county, it could still be our newspaper of record, as long as the circulation covers the county and sufficiently. And also, one thing to note, because we did have a conversation earlier today when we were doing agenda review, was sort of what is that framework? And one thing to note, in order to be a legal newspaper, you have to be able to, they actually have to publish print and display legal notices, of which some of our news outlets locally do not do that. They're only online, and they do not have a print edition, nor do they run legal ads, and that is one of the requirements for being able to serve in this capacity.
Perfect. Any other questions for Assistant County Manager? Is there a motion? Someone?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to call for sealed bids for the official county newspaper? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any post? Okay. Item 4F is approved. We have 5A Community Planning and Economic Development Ordinance for Agricultural Code Amendments, CPA 16, and Andrew Difovis, pinch hitting for Ashley Arai.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Andrew Difovis, Senior Planner with Community Planning, filling in for Ashley Arai, Community Planning Manager today for this item. Today's motion for the board's consideration is to adopt an ordinance that expands agricultural uses, which are allowed within the Long-Term Agriculture District, and clarifies regulations and streamlines permitting within the agriculture, excuse me, agritourism overlay district, amending Chapters 2003, 2008A, 2008G, and 2054 of the Thurston County Code. For example, the proposed amendments would allow retail greenhouses to proceed as a secondary use on an agricultural property, whereas currently, this is considered a special use, which requires a special use permit and hearings examiner approval. It's just one example of simplification. This item is included on the 2022-2023 Official Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket as item CPA 16, Community Driven Review of Agricultural Programs and Policies. Today's adopting ordinance is only on code amendments which affect the Long-Term Ag District and Agritourism Overlay District. The adopting ordinance does not include any zoning or map amendments. Those would be, we'll have a separate public hearing later in 2024. The agricultural code update has had full legislative review, including stakeholder review with the Agriculture Advisory Committee, Voluntary Stewardship Program Work Group, Agritourism Committee, Olympia Master Builders, Realtors Association, and more. Additionally, the Planning Commission reviewed the changes over six work sessions and a public hearing before recommending approval of the code changes on August 2nd, 2023, with a vote of five to two. The board reviewed over five briefings in late 2023 and early 2024, with a public hearing held on January 16th. That concludes my remarks on this item. I'm happy to take any questions.
And numerous staff hours?
Numerous staff hours on this, absolutely.
And who actually requested this review?
That I'm not completely shut off. It's-
Citizens requested it, in my understanding.
Yes, yes. So it is, it's called the Community Driven Review of Agricultural Programs and Policies. So I couldn't tell you exactly which citizens, but over the years, we've heard, you know, a number of concerns, comments, questions, suggestions for improvements on a lot of our agricultural policies, and so all of those were wrapped up into one comp plan item. This is one piece of that overarching comp plan item.
Just to let the public know, we do, we do listen, and we do respond, although sometimes slowly. But we, we eventually get through the process. So thank you, staff, for all your effort on this.
I'd like to additionally thank Commissioner Edwards and staff, who kind of took what the planning commission had, and kind of took it to the next level with some, like some line, going line by line through some of the agricultural use restrictions. I think you were hearing from constituents about them, so you're listening to constituents, who then, and staff's listening to board, and then the board went through those line items, and I think made some good improvements that weren't even really a part of the original process. So by the time we get it all the way through, hopefully it's, you know, it's really an improvement for the community.
And I would just interject that while I work with the people who work on this project, I did not work on it specifically, so all that credit definitely needs to go to the folks that are back in community planning, and I'm, I'm just here to fill in for this piece.
Tell Ashley thanks, she was the ramrod.
Absolutely.
Is there a motion?
I would move to approve an ordinance adopting changes that expand agricultural uses within the Long-Term Agricultural District and clarify regulations and streamline permitting within the agritourism overlay district, amending chapters 20.03, 20.08A, 20.08G, and 20.54 of the Thurston County Code. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this ordinance for agricultural code amendments. Any discussion? I'm just going to make one additional comment, that I think, you know, this is a really good example of how it just takes like one commissioner's sort of energy or attention to bring something to the board, and there was no resistance from the board about making the changes that Commissioner Edwards was promoting. It just took someone to do it, and I think that's, it's sort of a reflection of the value the community gets from having five commissioners here, because we, we can only juggle so many issues and so many meetings with constituents and stuff, so having five of us out there connecting to the community and hearing things like that presents additional opportunities for us to make these types of improvements. So little pitch, little, little thumbs up to the public for helping us get to this place where we have this opportunity. With all of that, there's no other discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes. Thanks. Item 5B, also CPED. Marissa Wisman is here, Associate Planner, to discuss request for qualification for HCP Habitat Conservation Plan Implementation Support. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. County Manager, I'm Marissa Wisman here, Associate Planner and Biologist with Thurston County Community Planning. Community Planning is seeking board approval to issue a request for qualifications or RFQ for technical, technical support in the management, restoration, and enhancement of lands or rights of lands acquired for the Habitat Conservation Land, Conservation Plan Conservation Land System. The HCP requires a third party to hold conservation easements and stewardship endowments for county-owned conservation lands, and the extensive conservation land network we're in the process of building will require technical assistance in order for the site management to ensure success. Qualified respondents of the RFQ would include not-for-profit consulting firms with expertise in South Pugent Sound Prairie and Wetland Restoration. The role of the selected firm or firms would include development of site management plans, planning and carried out, carrying out prescribed burns, which I know firsthand requires very complicated logistics and a lot of personnel involved, conservation grazing, weed management, revegetation, monitoring, and holding easements and stewardship endowment. The county will enter into contracts for services with any selected firms, and these contracts will be brought before the board for discussion and approval. The recipients will be paid using funding from HCP mitigation fees. This concludes my remarks, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Trobisch, you can check, you can have a comment. I'm sure Ms. Wisman will answer your question once we get done with the item. Any questions from the board? So it kind of sounds technical, the way you describe it, but like, just to kind of lay it out, you know, more simply, we're allowed to issue building permits on gopher habitat, because we're taking responsibility for preserving equal amounts of territory, but that territory has to be managed over time, so that it remains adequate habitat for the endangered species. And that's what we're, we're trying to find, an organization that will take on that role for us?
That's correct.
Okay, so just kind of, just kind of boiling it down for folks, so we know what this is about. Because we also had, for example, last month, we had a RFP for, it was more about messaging the HCP. I mean, it was another set of proposals for another component of what this overall program involves. This is, you know, this is just about managing the habitat over the long term.
That's correct. Yeah, the former RFP was for public outreach and education, for both county personnel and the public, and from a D's, whereas this is more for the, you know, the technical aspect of all, all types of management of these conservation lands that we're going to build over the next 30 years.
Okay. Okay, hearing no other questions. Thank you. Marissa, is there a motion?
To authorize Community Planning and Economic Development to issue a request for qualifications for technical support in the management, restoration, enhancement of lands, rights in lands acquired for the Habitat Conservation Plan, HCP Conservation Land System.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the RFP, RFQ, to be issued. And any discussion on that motion?
I want to say, we let Mr. Pettit talk, are we going to let Mr. Trobisch talk?
I only let Mr. Pettit speak, because Commissioner Claus essentially requested that, and it related to her decision-making process, so.
Thank you.
But I'm sure Mr. Trobisch can connect with staff after, right after this, if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Wisman. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right, thank you. Okay, next up is Emergency Services 6A. We have Ben Miller Todd, Emergency Services Director, to brief the board on resolution for the Thurston Region Hazards Mitigation Plan.
I'm going to actually use your baseball theme, as it is right now. Sorry, Ben Miller Todd, Director of Emergency Services. I'm actually going to call in a pinch hitter, since we're starting into the MLB spring training season. And I'm going to bring up Kyle Buustad. He's our EM manager. I do want to call out, I'm going to say one thing, probably to embarrass him ahead of it, but this is a, this has been a six-year ongoing plan that's integrated into a large number of community stakeholders throughout Thurston County, whether it's our municipalities, or fire districts, or anybody, anybody throughout Thurston County. We've really, really integrated heavily with over 50 individual entities throughout Thurston County to come up with a hazard mitigation plan. I'm going to bring Kyle and Emily Schonendorf up, just to give you a few remarks regarding the plan, as this is a significant success for Thurston County.
Thank you, Ben. Welcome, Kyle.
Thank you. Aye, Commissioners. I wrote notes, just because Ben said, "You have notes," and I said, "No," and he said, "So we're, we're in front of you because we're asking for a resolution for adoption and approval of the Hazard Mitigation Plan." It's a FEMA requirement that we have, the local jurisdictions have, an adopted and approved plan that's updated every five years in order to receive hazard mitigation funding. So this is our update. It's been, it's been a challenge in that we've had a lot of turnover in emergency management, but this team really took charge. Emily, Brandon Chaney, and Paul Brewster from TRPC really pushed us over the finish line, engaged with cities and towns across the county, multiple departments, and I, we should be really proud of the effort that was done. So FEMA has reviewed and approved it. They had small, one small minor change, which is, we're pretty proud of and happy, and so we made the change. They have officially approved it, and now all that's left is for you to adopt it, and so that's why we're here today. And happy to answer any questions.
So this is a regional plan. Does it apply to all jurisdictions within Thurston County?
It does.
How do you roll that out to each of them and educate them on that?
So during the planning process, we interacted with cities and towns in unincorporated Thurston County, along with Olympia, Tumwater, and Lacey, who did their own independent annexes, who worked on it, and it's part of our overall core plan. So it is, it, the interaction with cities and towns in unincorporated county were part of the planning process. And so it is, once we have the initiatives, we have the initiatives. It is our role and responsibility to then continuously engage into all of our partners and stakeholders throughout the county.
Any other questions for Kyle? All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the resolution adopting the fourth edition of the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Thurston County region.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the resolution for the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emergency Services is still up. We've got 6B Procurement of Panasonic Tough Mate G2 Ruggedized Tablets and Associated, man, that's a good, fun word to say, ruggedized tablets and associated equipment.
Good afternoon, Ben Miller Todd, Emergency Services. I have to do it one more time. You have to do it in threes with baseball, and I'll take a swing at this one. With that, Thurston County Medic One deploys ruggedized tablets that contain critical software necessary for documenting patient care in the field. These tablets have reached the end of their functional and secure life cycle, and were last procured in June of 2018. These tablets have a scheduled replacement cycle of five years, and were incorporated into Medic One's equipment and replacement schedule that was presented during the 24-25 budget development process, was recommended to the board unanimously by the EMS Council, and were incorporated into the board-approved 2024-2025 billionary budget. The total cost of the 125 Panasonic Tough Mate G2 tablets and associated equipment totals $659,643.06. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? This is so your medic folks can-
Yes. Well, I shouldn't say yes, hang on.
Or if they do that, they may survive.
Yes. Given, given the rugged, so the ruggedized, given the rugged environment of EMS, and within and surrounding, incorporated within the fire service, these tablets need to have a little extra protection, given those environments.
Thank you.
I might need one, much as I dropped my phone on the desk.
All right, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the agreement with Daytech for the procurement of 125 Panasonic Tough Mate G2 tablets and associated equipment, and warranties for the amount of $659,643.06 through the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services and ASPO Value Point Contract Number 05820, and authorize the Director of Emergency Services to execute the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Motion in second for Panasonic Tough Mate Ruggedized Tablets. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up is Public Health and Social Services, request for proposals for public health and social services. Tom Webster, our Senior Program Manager for Housing Services, to brief the board on this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Webster, with Office of Housing and Homes Prevention, so here to ask your approval to authorize us to issue an RFP, a request for proposal for, to receive applications related to homeless services and affordable housing, the community development block grant program, and veterans' emergency shelter funds. So we have about nine different fund sources that we're putting out in this RFP. Many of these are going to be focused on affordable housing this year for capital projects, but we also have our federal community development block grant programs that we award every year. This year, the city of Tumwater, those projects will be for the city of Tumwater. Tumwater City Council will review those applications and make recommendations to this board. And there's also some funding in here under the Veterans Advisory Board for the Veterans Emergency Shelter Program. Our application process will open this Friday on February 23rd, with applications due on Friday, April 5th. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Tom? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I would move to authorize Public Health and Social Services to issue a 2024 request for proposals to receive applications with intent to issue contracts related to services for homeless services and affordable housing, community development block grant, and veterans' emergency shelter funds. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve this request, request for proposals being issued. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Public Works is up next with item 8A, Interlocal Agreement with City of Lacey for Pacific Avenue Pavilion Preservation. Brian Meyer, Engineering Project Manager, to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Brian Meyer, Engineering Projects Manager, Thurston County Public Works. Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners to execute an interlocal agreement with the city of Lacey- to execute an interlocal agreement with the City of Lacey for the Pacific Avenue Pavement Preservation Capital Project 98408. This project is from Carpenter Road to Union Mills. The portion between Carpenter Road and Kenwood Street is within the incorporated city limits. This interlocal agreement provides for a collaboration between the city and Thurston County for all costs and work associated with the city's work. The project is 100% federally funded through the National Highway Performance Program. This interlocal agreement with the city will be responsible for, will line out that the responsibility for any costs associated with the city work not covered by the grant will be the responsibility of the city. Their local agreement has been through the city's process, and they are in agreement with it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Questions? Is there a motion?
I would move to execute the interlocal agreement with the City of Lacey for pavement preservation and related infrastructure improvements in support of the Pacific Avenue Pavement Preservation Project CP number 98408.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to execute an interlocal agreement with City of Lacey on pavement preservation. Any discussion of the motion?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
I would just like to point out to the public that the reason there aren't any questions is because we've been briefed on this several times, and Brian's done an excellent job at that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next up is Public Works 8B. Ordinance repealing Thurston County Code 1304 relating to road districts. County Engineer Matt Anselman to give us a history lesson about county road districts.
I've given this history lesson a lot in the last two weeks. Matt Anselman, Thurston County Engineer. So, Public Works staff reviewed code last year in anticipation of the new five-member board, and to determine if any changes needed to be made to the code because of the new additional board members. It was determined an update to Thurston County Code 1304 regarding road districts was necessary. In 1969, here starts the history lesson. Thurston County passed Ordinance 3900, which established two road districts as provided for by RCW 3675060. And I want to correct something I said this morning. I said they established Commissioner Districts 1 and 3. It was actually 2 and 3, so just to make it more confusing. As the county no longer utilizes the road district system, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners approve the ordinance repealing the prior Thurston County Code 1304 and adopt the proposed ordinance defining all territory in Thurston County outside of the incorporated cities and towns as a single Thurston County Road District.
Man.
There you go.
Any questions or comments from the board? No, okay. Momentous occasion, the single road district. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve an ordinance repealing the prior Thurston County Code 1304 and adopt the proposed ordinance defining all territory in Thurston County outside of the incorporated cities and towns as a single Thurston County Road District.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to repeal Thurston County Code 1304 and approve this ordinance. Is there any discussion? So, I have a question, now that I'm thinking about this. So, if the board adopted the proposal that's on the table to move, like, to take UGA and swap it for other area in the UGA, now that's still in the county, so that would not change the road district. How about if there's an annexation? Does that mean we have to do something to amend the road, or is it automatic?
It should, it should go with the annexation.
Okay, there's no extra step there that we're creating?
No, I will confirm that, and I really hope not, but...
Yeah, I'm sure that would be how it is now, but it's just kind of interesting. Okay, very good. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
We already did 9A, so we're up to our standing items under 10A. Commissioners to report on board work sessions, assigned committee meetings, providing updates on action taken, upcoming issues, really anything. It's up to the Commissioner. I'll start with Commissioner Klaus.
Okay, so I have just a couple. Last week, I attended the Innovative Justice Meeting on February 13th. We had a presentation from Lehigh staff regarding Maple Court. We talked about the successes and barriers that they're facing over at Maple Court. I learned that there's a lower number of calls to Lacey Police Department compared to when it was the days in, so that was pretty interesting. I thought that was a really good point that they made. They, we talked about external conversations regarding referrals from the Right of Way Initiative, and why some people are prioritized over others. So, we had that discussion, which was pretty informative, too. And I also just wanted to say, I appreciate the opportunities lately to learn more about Maple Court. I know there's been a lot of conversations around the facility, and I just appreciate the time that Lehigh staff has taken to inform elected officials and other leaders about what's going on there. The second thing, on, let's see, February 12th, I actually met briefly with CPED staff to talk about some of the docket items. And again, I also want to say, I appreciate the communication on behalf of the community. This has been something the community has been really engaged with, so I've been trying my best to engage with constituents when they reach out with concerns about docket items. So, I would encourage community members to continue reaching out to me or other Commissioners if you have concerns or questions about those items. And I'm hopeful that we can provide opportunities to engage with the public during the 20-day comment period that's coming up. So, that should be opening up, I think, around the end of this week or beginning of next week, pretty soon. There's a lot of docket items, so I've kind of received some comments from constituents that 20 days to review that many docket items and give public comment is a little bit difficult. So, I would just encourage Commissioners to try, try our best to engage with people between now and the end of that 20-day period, so we can make an informed decision on some of these really complicated topics. My executive aide attended the ORCA meeting, and they discussed the SOAP program, which I can't remember what the acronym stands for, but it's in regards to education around encampment fires and the legalities of burning in houseless encampments. So, that was pretty interesting to receive some info on that. And then, yesterday, my executive aide attended a meeting with Mr. Trowbridge regarding Patterson Lake, and I learned a little bit more about that topic as well. That's all I have.
I would maybe add to about the docket item. You mentioned the docket process, that even though, everything you said is totally 100% valid, although, just to point out to folks that the 20-day period and then decisions that the Commissioners make, usually it's in March every year, is about the work plan. It's really not, it's not anywhere near the final decision on any of these items, so there's a whole other public process that will be engaged, and we're happy to take comment on whether we should even put on the work plan, but it's a very preliminary step to the actual approval of any of the items there. So, not to worry if they are overwhelmed at this juncture, they'll be able to plug into the item that they care about and give comment to the Planning Commission and to the Commissioners.
Most of those docket items aren't new to the docket either. They've sat there on the website, some for years.
There's very few new, the good thing this year is that there's not as many new items as we've had in the past, so we should be able to get some significant progress toward completing the items on the docket. Ms. Edwards?
I don't, I don't have anything really on the, our committee assignments of merit that's really worth burning up time on, just... I, really, the week has been mostly on constituent issues around land use, land use compliance issues, and criminal activity on parcels of land that have been taken over by undesirable characters. Just a little bit of that, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Fornier? I, I mentioned this at our agenda-setting meeting before, but I attended the canvassing board meeting while Commissioner Mensah was out of town, and I really enjoyed that. My EA went to the study meeting in my place while I was in the canvassing board meeting. I participated in the Shale's Basin Flood Authority meeting, and that was, it was very informative. Got to learn about what, it was basically a baseline of what the flood authority is. And then, the Transportation Policy Board meeting was held. I am now the second vice chair for TPB, and at that meeting, we had a presentation from PSC on the energy grid, which it sounds like we'll be hearing more about beginning of March here at one of our meetings. So, I look forward to that.
You should be here.
Okay, I have a little bit. I attended, as I presented this morning, the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference in DC, met with many of our congressional delegates, and let them know about what our requests are going to be and this year, and kind of what our priorities are on a federal level. I attended the Switches On Kickoff Event. I attended the study meeting and gave the report out on behalf of the board. I also attended the TST Advisory Committee Meeting and presented on the TCAP program, met with Boston Harbor constituents on surplus land as well as tax title properties. That meeting got attended by Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder, as well as Public Works Director Jennifer Walker. I've had several meetings in regards to docket item, as well as ongoing housing issues, and then inner-city transit, not much to report there. I guess I am the vice chair for inner-city transit, so it's very exciting. And we met with Executive Director Emily Burkamp and discussed maybe having a meeting with, with the board, having the full board going into IT, and then giving, them giving us their kind of yearly report out in their new buildings and giving us kind of a tour there, so that will be forthcoming, yeah.
Take a bus.
I have a question. You mentioned a tax title in Boston Harbor. Was that before the board's discussion?
Yes.
Has that item, I, I kept the paperwork, and I kind of expected it to be on today's agenda, and it wasn't? Is that, what's happening with that?
That item was pulled and potentially coming back on the March 5th meeting, if the board would like, but we've been doing some additional fact-finding about other parcels. There was, especially, there's an adjoining parcel, and whether or not that was also tax titled, but it is not.
And just as an additional, I have spoken with Treasurer Gadman and asked for him to meet with the same group of constituents that I met with, which was a really, really large group, right, and kind of go through the tax title process, just so they're kind of like informed on that, but, and they can get their questions answered. But there was just, again, just some concerns on that, but...
Okay, very good. For me, I had, I reported on the Clean Water Conference this morning, so you can check that. Lot of activity with State Building Code Council. We had two meetings plus a public hearing. I was appointed to the Litigation Subcommittee. I was also reappointed to the Council for a three-year appointment, so there'll be a lot of stuff going on there. Attended the Black History Pop-Up Museum, which I mentioned earlier, that was awesome. Sentencing Guideline Commission meeting. Went to the Board of Health Orientation, attended the Innovative Justice, as Commissioner Klaus mentioned. And I did learn a lot about Maple Court there, so that was, answered some of my questions. A lot of work on the mature forest issue and docket items, as my, I know my CPED mates have also had a lot of input, stakeholder input. Commissioner Fornier and I met with the tribe on the docket process. They had questions about that. So, busy a couple of weeks, and with that, I'll turn to the Assistant County Manager to go over our combined schedule.
Thank you. Commissioners, so the next few weeks, I'll quickly review your schedule where we have three or more Commissioners in attendance. It does not preclude there being other items on your individual Commissioner calendars. Starting tomorrow, we have two board work sessions, one from 9:00 to noon here in Room 110 at the atrium building, as well as from 2:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon. Tomorrow morning specifically, we'll be talking about sort of legislative updates to the transportation system, and in the afternoon, we'll be covering, we'll have some folks talking about the Dushuts, as well as the Fairer Board Apportionment, which is one of those topics that came up earlier this morning. That conversation will occur then. Next week, we will be looking at, on Monday, the 26th, there will be a board work session from 10:00 until noon, and then one from 2:00 to 4:30. Specifically, that morning, we'll have, we'll be covering public defense caseload standards, and then we'll be doing a check-in on the Thurston 2045, which is our comprehensive plan update for folks that aren't familiar with that phrase. Tuesday, the 27th, again, we'll have 9:00 to 10:30, there will be an agenda setting. And then, from 10:30 to 4:30, we have a Commissioners' Planning Session scheduled. Wednesday, the 28th, we have from 9:00 to noon a board work session, and in the afternoon, from 2:00 to 4:30, a board work session. And those topics, again, we'll have a legislative update, and the afternoon session will specifically include a presentation from Thurston County School Superintendents. Potentially, on Thursday, the 29th, there is a tour of the Thurston County Water Lab, and that, there may be more than one Commissioner or more than three Commissioners there in attendance. And then, prior to the next time we are together again in this meeting, on Monday, the 4th, there will be a board works session in the morning. Potentially, there will be the WASAC, or the Washington State Association of Counties Virtual Assembly at noon, which is virtual, and on Zoom only. And then, there is a Commissioners' Check-In that afternoon from 2:00 to 4:30.
I wanted to mention one thing. Commissioner Meehan and I, earlier today, attended a ribbon-cutting for a, what is it? A take-and-go kiosk? Test-and-go kiosk at the Tenino Community Service Center, the food bank. And it's one of the, it's the first in the county, one of the first in the state, where it's a, it's a big electronic kiosk outdoors where somebody can go up and they can get a COVID test out of it. Pretty soon, they'll offer pregnancy tests and other, other things, health-related, and it's pretty cool, so...
It's one of 17 in Washington State.
Is it a state? Who's putting it together?
It says, Wash State Department of Health. Our, our delegates from the, from Public Health and Safety were with us. But yeah, it says Wash State Department of Health on the side of it.
I have a question about that. You said it offers COVID tests, and soon we'll offer other kinds of testing. Will it have, like, drug testing, like, fentanyl testing strips or things like that? Or is it mostly, like, health-related to the person and not the...
All they mentioned was health-related stuff, but I'm not, I'm not sure what the extent, extensivity of it would be, but I imagine it could be anything.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, it was cool.
I saw a picture of it, and I was like, that's super cool. I mean, that's such a great resource, and it's accessible 24/7, so that's awesome.
All right, very good. Thanks, everybody. Having come to the end of the business agenda, we're adjourned.
Nicely done.